Good evening, Garden City. I'd like to call to order the city council meeting for Monday, June 23rd, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Our first order of business is the opening ceremony, consists of the National Anthem, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for those service members who have given their lives for our country. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, if you take roll call, please.
Mayor Jacobs.
Here. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Miller.
Mayor Protem Dole.
Here.
Councilmember Hughes.
Here.
Councilmember Witt.
Here.
Councilmember King.
Here.
Councilmember Dole.
Here.
Councilmember Karafodis.
Here.
We do have a full quorum of seven members, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item four is the approval of the agenda.
Mayor.
Councilmember Witt.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Monday, June 23rd council meeting agenda as presented.
Support. Support from Mayor Protem Dole. Comments from the table? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Item five is recognition. I'd like to call up Police Chief Bob Arnoski and Sergeant Craig Lewis, and this is for our 2025 Citizens Academy graduates.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for the opportunity. We're here tonight to recognize the recent Garden City Citizens Police Academy graduates. Sergeant Lewis and Officer Pavlov and Lieutenant Coover helped organize the event. It was 10 weeks long. I don't want to talk too much because Sergeant Lewis has prepared a speech for you tonight to honor, recognize everybody. What I did want to say, though, is we had 19 officers from the department participate in this program, and I wanted to give them all a big acknowledgement that they donated their time to come out and instruct and interact and have a good time with everybody. So, thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Good morning. Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm honored to stand before you tonight to recognize nine outstanding community members who recently completed the Garden City Police Department's Citizens Academy. This 10-week program, which began April 1st, provided participants with an in-depth understanding of our department's operations, including patrol duties, traffic enforcement, investigations, and specialized units like SWAT and K-9. Throughout the academy, attendees engaged in both classroom instruction and hands-on training. They learned about evidence collection, conducted simulated traffic stops, and participated in OWI investigations. In the final week, they experienced high-stress scenarios using our Milo Interactive Simulator and simulation pistols. They gained firsthand insight into rapid decision-making required in law enforcement situations. These individuals stepped out of their comfort zones to better understand the challenges faced by our officers. Their commitment to learning and community engagement exemplifies the spirit of Garden City. Please join me in congratulating the following graduates. And as I call your name, please come forward to receive your certificate of completion. Your dedication and understanding, your dedication to understanding and supporting our police department is truly commendable. Thank you all. All right. Turn around. Make it easier. So Edward Wyland.
Congratulations.
Come on up here and we'll take a picture.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Janine Wyland.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Donna Cansinari. Congratulations.
Thank you. This was awesome.
Yep. Carol Pearson.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Yeah. Councilmember Dominic King.
How about? Thanks for this guy.
I always got everyone.
Bridget King. Angie Johnson-Madison.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations. Fawn Sevator.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And Cheryl Teeter. Congratulations.
Maybe two layers, maybe?
Two layers.
At this time, we're going to take a short recess, and for those that want to go out and celebrate their certificate. Okay, we are back in session. Item six, we have no state or county officials. Item seven is a presentation on our new Code Red emergency notification, and for that I'll bring up Communications Director Zach King.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I want to come before you as we're switching from NICSOL to Code Red at the end of this month. Code Red is already active and live. Residents can start signing up today. We've already, you might have already seen it on the website and social media. But I want to come to you guys before we do get rid of NICSOL, to switch everyone over to Code Red. So we will continue throughout this week to send both NICSOLs and Code Red to residents. And then every few days, while we're sending it NICSOL, also let people know it's time to sign up for Code Red because that will be inactive on the 30th. So July 1, we'll only be sending out Code Reds. So I have a little presentation. We're just going to go one by one, the steps of signing up for Code Red. It is a little bit more detailed, a little bit more steps than it was for NICSOL, but the benefit of that is knowing your address and other information, which makes it easier for us to send out notifications. So we take a look at the first step. You can either text "Garden City" to 24639. That's a number you can actually save in your contacts as well. It is a phone number. It's a short code. If you save that in your contacts, that is the number you'll get the text messages from as well after you're signed up. Or you can visit online, gardencitymi.org code red. The first screen, what you see there, you can either sign in on the left, or what we need to do, because we don't have an account yet, we need to click Register. So we're going to click on Register. The next step will take you to a screen to type in your name, your email. It'll say username, but you can pick whatever you want, or your email, and a password. You'll understand the terms and conditions, agree that you're not a robot, and on the next screen, it'll have you verify your email address. Here, it is going to send you a code to the email that you have to type in on the next screen. So you're going to go to your email, you're going to grab that code. You'll type in here, this is to verify you're not a robot or some spam online account in our system. After you verify email, you can hit Next, and it's going to take you to the screen where you can fill out all your information. Here, you're able to type in your name, your language, the time zone you're in, the devices, which will show you a little more. You can add your phone, your email, or a voice call. You'll be able to add your address. This is required because that is a benefit of the system, is we can send targeted messages to just your address if there's something in that area, like a water main break or some tap five activity. And then down below, you can select your groups. So if we go to the next screen, we can look at what it means to add a device. So you can either add an SMS, a voice, or email. The benefit of this system, too, beyond NICSOL, is we can send out those calls. So if it is an important message and you want to receive a call with it reading you the message, we can do that as well. On the next step, we can look at the location. This is how you add your location into the system. You simply just type your address in the top-left corner. It'll show you your house, and you click Add in the bottom-right corner. And then the last step, we can pick what groups you want to hear from. So a little bit better, the additional feature we have from NICSOL is you can actually choose what type of notifications you want to get. So if you want all those little tiny notifications we'll do for all the different events and towns and such, you can check that box where it says non-emergency alerts. You can opt in, and you can also opt in for weather alerts. We want to keep this as small as possible, so just by doing the steps you saw today, you'll get the emergency alerting no matter what. You can take an extra step and add in those non-emergency alerts and those severe weather alerts. Even if you don't select these severe weather alerts, the Command Center next door with PD might still send one through our normal way, but these are automatic alerts through the Code Red system. So if the National Weather Service sets off one of those warnings or alerts, or watches, I should say, you'll get those automatically. The Command Center still might take it on their own to send out that notification of severe weather in the city. Lastly, when you get done with all those three steps, make sure you click on Save in the bottom-right corner. You'll see in the top-right corner, it says successfully added your information. And then the next screen, I believe, has put the, how to sign up. So again, you can go to gardencitymi.org code red, or you can register on your phone by texting "Garden City" to 24639. We're pretty excited to be implementing Code Red training. All the staff is going to be next week, and we're going to start using this full-time July 1st. So, any questions? All right, thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. Okay, item eight, community events. Mr. Miller's going to talk about the Rotary Club.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. This is for our, the Rotary Club's annual school supply donations. They're going to have actually a big push at the Thursday, August 21st, Music in the Park. But we, beginning July 1st, will have a box also at City Hall, and we coordinate with Rotary to accept school supplies also at that time. So we will have that here. I just wanted to get it out early so that we can, when you start to see things come on sale and all of that, and then we will get those all ready and get them over to the club. All right, thank you.
Thank you. I have a question. The one, the one you showed us has July 17th.
Thank you, I'm sorry. It is July 17th. I apologize.
Okay.
And I wrote that on my agenda, so, thank you. At the July 17th. So mine shows August 21st, which I don't know why. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have no petitions or communications. We have some public hearings tonight. One is on the water and sewer rate ordinance. I will turn it over to Mr. Gibbons.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yeah, tonight, we have had a, set a public hearing to discuss our water rates for 2526. As council is aware, we have been working diligently to address three primary issues existing in our water fund. The first is, you know, currently our water fund requires about $12.2 million to break even. Our revenues are only set at about $9.2 million. So we need to close the gap between the amount we're bringing in through billing. It's a water fund that should, is a user fee. It should pay for the service it provides. It is currently coming up short. How we got by previously, as we've discussed, is there was a $9.2 million fund balance back around 2017, 2018, and we've exhausted that, and we're actually operating in the negative. Which brings us to the next issue, is the water fund currently has no reserve fund. A reserve fund is a very necessary operation of a water fund. You need money to have working capital. If you pay out money, you need money in the bank to have it until revenues come in. Also, if there's emergency purchases necessary, if an immediate capital need comes up, we need to be able to fund it. Any good business or any operation needs a certain amount of reserve funding. Ours is recommended as a bare minimum, around $3 million. We're currently $3 million in the hole in our fund, and it's owed to the general, the water fund now owes the general fund, and that is issue number three. So really, if you look at it in the terms of a five-year problem, if we do nothing, we're coming up $3 million short for five years. That's about $15 million. If we, in addition to the fact that we're $3 million below where we should, we're $3 million below where we should be, and then we're $3 million below that, owed to the general fund, we've got about a $21 million to come up with over five years. It's hard to avoid a rate increase for this. I continue to, to sort of propose a certain rate increase. The Band-Aid approach, it's attached to your agendas. We've discussed it. We'd have explored options. I have Brian Cammamiller here from Plant Moran, and Shannon, our treasurer, if you guys want to come up. And they're available for questions, and I'll let Brian speak a little bit on the issue and how we came about to land where we are and why we believe this is the best approach. But, you know, as I stated at the last meeting when we called for this public hearing, we've taken the community input. We've, we've put every pretty much senior area we can through. This is the least painful way, not to say it's not painful anytime you raise rates, especially as much we have to, but this is the least painful way and the most direct way to solve an immediate problem. But I'll let Brian take over from here.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Thank you for having me. Everything that City Manager Gibbons said is exactly right. The city has a, a problem. You have been spending more money than you've been bringing in through the water fund. You've spent all of your cash reserves going back to 2017, and so the city just needs to correct that. The city had very good intentions over the years of thinking of the residents, the water source customers, trying not to put an unfair burden on them. And in doing so, unfortunately, the unintended consequence is that you have gone through all of the cash that you once had, and it's just not sustainable. Currently, you're borrowing from your general fund. Your general fund cannot finance water and sewer forever. It really can't finance water and sewer for the next five years. So the rates that have been suggested, certainly not the only combination of options. There are a variety of them. We've played with the model and tried to come up with other solutions that are better for the city, better for the residents than what we have presented. And unfortunately, as Mr. Gibbons said, it's not a good solution, but it is the, the least bad solution of those that are available. And I'm very sorry to tell you that, but you're in a position where you have to make a tough decision.
If I could just add, Mr. Mayor, from Mr. Cammamiller, the, lately it's come up, just the kind of explanation of Bolt versus City of Lansing. There's some concerns about, hey, what, you know, does Bolt versus Lansing decision permit you to hold a reserve fund? And as I've tried to articulate, it's a necessary function of enterprise, but I just wanted to see if you could address it as well.
Yes, and I'm actually, I am pleasantly surprised that it is a topic of conversation because in a lot of cities, they're going to say, hey, what's Bolt? They don't know what that is. So the fact that the city is discussing this and making sure that you're not causing yourself a potential legal problem, that is very good. But fortunately, having reserve cash on hand is not a violation of the Bolt decision. In fact, it is, the amount of money that the model is suggesting that you accumulate is the absolute bare minimum according to the industry standards. You will not have a Bolt problem by accumulating the money, paying yourself back, really, paying general fund back, and then putting a few million dollars into the bank for water and sewer. Now, if you were accumulating $50 million and you continued to issue debt for doing a project instead of spending that $50 million, at that point, you could make an argument that you have excessive reserves and that you have intentionally or unintentionally, unfairly or illegally taxed your residents. But this is not the case. Putting away $3 million after general fund gets paid back its $3 million, it's, it's the bare minimum that we would want you to have. If it wasn't such a painful decision already, I would probably suggest raising rates even more. But we're not doing that. We're getting you to where, where you need to be to continue long-term at a minimum. But Bolt is, should not be a concern.
I would ask Council, hold, hold your questions for when we get through the public hearing and it comes before us on an action item. As for the residents, for your public comments, if you have a question, ask it, and we'll get to it also at the same time. Our treasurer, you're good? Okay. So at this point, I'll open up the public hearing on our water and sewer rate. Anybody wishing to speak? While she's doing that, anybody else wishing to speak?
So in the Bolt versus Lansing, there were also other cases that were cited, like Ripponer, and then when you looked at that one, there were a lot of other cases. Did you run across that, Tim? Because I was told that you were looking into all of this.
Yes.
Okay. And in one of those cases, raising the rate drastically was also open to a lawsuit. Did you read that, too?
Not that the rate was. You know, it's what you do with the money and the purpose you have. So a user, Bolt was really criticizing using a user fee, using a user fee law to mask a tax.
No, I understand that.
So drastic rate cuts can happen, so long, or drastic rate increases can happen so long as it's for the purpose of operating the fund and operating the, the commodity, in this case, the water fund.
So doesn't that come back to, I hate to have to start citing cases because I didn't list them like that. That, it says, if the municipality's rates are excessive, then they may be required, and this is along with, maybe I should read the whole thing. In the public utility context, a municipality obtains a benefit from the users because the users pay various charges. The issue is whether the municipality is unjustly or inequitably retaining the funds. Whether a municipality received an unjust benefit from retaining charges depends on whether the rates viewed as a whole were unreasonable inasmuch as they were excessive. And they are excessive. Not on whether some aspect of the municipality's ratemaking ideology was improper. So it wasn't about the, the ideology being improper, but so much as the rates being excessive. And then it went on to cite Humen versus the Charter Township of Bloomfield. Did you look at that, too?
I couldn't tell you any specific ones, but I can definitely advise you're excessive.
So it says, if the municipality's rates are excessive, then they may be, may be required to refund, refund utility fees to users under the theory of unjust enrichment. But if you go on, now I have to find the next part, that it's, a municipality can collect utility fees to provide for the operation and maintenance of that utility. So then the question becomes, if you're allowed to collect a fee, why aren't we collecting a user fee? Why are we putting it in the rate? Because we all know rates don't come down. This is, this rate will be, you know, we're going to go from, well, if we calculate for 1,000 gallons as comparing it to other cities, and when we're charged at 748 gallons, we look like we're paying less, but if you equate it to the 1,000 gallons that the rest of the cities are paying, we're actually paying, you know, 50 cents more than them. So we're going from that, and then of course, they'll get the Great Lakes hike as well. We're going to go from that rate to $68. So we're going to go from 22 with the rate hike from GLWA to 68. Now, how is that attainable for anybody here?
10 seconds.
Somebody give me their time.
That's why I recommend you just ask the questions, and then we'll answer them afterwards.
I can, I can just, I just want to address those as it's fresh.
Go ahead.
The use of the term excessive would be not necessary to maintain the system. So we have a direct cost of around $12 million per year for the water fund. That is just to make, make the system run and to pay the water that comes in. So if we were charging, if we were trying to get a rate to get ourselves 20 million a year when we only needed 12, well, that 8 million would be the excessive part. So what we are able to demonstrate is that this is the cost of the system, and what we're billing is necessary to maintain the, the system's cost. So why, I certainly, at a time where we're increasing rates as we are, the term excessive is absolutely warranted to be discussed. In the context of Bolt and the appropriateness of our rate setting that we're proposing, they're all on par. In fact, as Brian stated, you know, if we were looking to get 50 million in reserves, that would be excessive, but we're actually only asking for the bare minimum. We could theoretically request more in a perfect world, but we're trying to put as little burden on our communities as we possibly can, given the terrible circumstance we're in. So, you know, everything is tied to a cost, and that's why, and in my memo and to Council, I've noted, we actually reduced some staffing to the water fund to just try and find any other ways to cut that we don't have to pass along those costs. I mean, is it less people than we've had in a very, very long time in the system? Yes, but can we get by, we're hoping, just fine, because I want to raise as little as we possibly can. So we're, I don't believe we're anywhere near excessive, and I believe we're well within Bolt.
Okay, thank you. Any further public comments?
I'm Morgan Price. I was just curious. I know we're in this deficit
I know we're in this deficit now and everything like that, but how did we get that? Is that from the overspending of everything over the years from Radcliffe on down? I mean, all of our money seems to be, now they're saying we got zip. And seniors that are on fixed incomes are going to be hit. And I mean, it's not nice or good for us. We're trying to make our ends meet. I'm just curious how we got in this situation when we should have some kind of surplus somewhere, but I see a lot of money going over, well, like I use Radcliffe as for instance. It's a lot of expenditures that should have never been done and was actually done the wrong way and not in certain steps. So, can you explain that for the people? Because we're paying for it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I will do that. We've discussed it before. All the money that was spent, was spent not at Radcliffe. It was spent on either equipment for DPW, for the water fund, equipment. It was used on water main breaks. The problem we had was, the money was spent, but it wasn't, we didn't raise rates from 2017 on to cover what we were spending. We just spent out of our water fund. So, the money was spent on appropriate things for the water, but it wasn't replaced. So, basically, we used our savings account instead of using it and replacing it by raising rates yearly from then on. All we did was raise rates enough to cover what we were being charged and not replenishing what we spent. So, everything, and Mr. Gibbons and Treasurer, they know where all the money was, Council knows it was put in where it was supposed to be spent. It just wasn't, rate wasn't raised enough to replenish what we spent. Further comments from the public? One more time, anybody further comments? Okay, I will close the public hearing on that. Our second public hearing is on our general appropriations ordinance. Mr. Gibbons?
Not much to say other than this is, the only reason this was held off in that past during the budget was we needed the revenue side of the water fund. You know, we'd had the expenditure side set. As I stated, we reduced our staffing from 16.8 full-time employees to 13.8. We found any other ways, we were reducing and delaying capital expenses. So, we're trying to keep costs at a minimum. So, the expenditure side reflects our best efforts there, and the revenue side reflects the proposed rate increases.
Okay, I'll open up that public hearing for anybody wishing to speak on that. Anybody wishing to speak on that ordinance? Okay, I will close that public hearing. Third public hearing is rezoning request for 29317, 29299, and 29217 Ford Road, which is the old Orin Jewelers properties. I'll bring up Mr. Ortega and Development Team. Mr. Ortega?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council members. Before you tonight is a request to rezone the property at the southeast corner of Ford and Middlebelt Roads in order to establish a planned development project. So, this site is comprised of four lots. Three are three, there are three separate commercial buildings at 29317 Ford, 29299 Ford, and 29217 Ford Road, and they are along with an associated parking lot to the rear. So, the applicant is actually proposing to demolish all existing structures and construct a four-story mixed-use building with 8,500 square feet of open space and a 94-space parking lot. The first floor would be a 20,000-square-foot commercial retail tenant area, and then the second through fourth floors will be occupied by 60 apartments. As I mentioned, the applicant is proposing a planned development rezoning in order to construct the building with the appropriate size and scale that will be financially viable while also including elements that are included and incorporated in the goals of the city's master plan. These are longstanding goals we have had for the downtown area. So, this is a mixed-use building that creates new residences in the downtown and new commercial retail areas that are constructed to modern standards. On May 8th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing regarding this proposed rezoning. At the hearing, there were no negative comments or concern raised by residents or property owners. So, the Commission has considered all the issues and has recommended that City Council approve the rezoning to PD Plan Development based on consistency with the goals and objectives of the master plan, consistency with the future land use designation in the master plan, and that the fact that the building and site design will include design elements and materials that will result in a high-quality development consistent with the intent of the underlying Central Business District. Here tonight is the property owner and along with their architect, and they have prepared a presentation for you, if you shall like that, to provide you with additional detail.
Okay, we'll watch that now. That way, residents can know what's being planned.
So, this is Albert Abbas, who's the property owner. And we do have your PowerPoint that will come up very quickly. When you want to move forward, you just say next slide and they'll move that forward for you, Albert. All right, thank you.
Thank you guys for, you know, holding this meeting and trying to make something happen over here in Garden City that I believe all the residents and, you know, the business owners in the downtown district will appreciate. So, this is Folk or Commons is the name of the project that's on Ford Road and Middlebelt. We're speaking about the Orin Jewelers and the two buildings next to it. I believe it's four parcels in that parking lot. And what we're proposing right now is to kind of do a wraparound from Ford Road and Middlebelt to take advantage of the commercial space that we can have and make it more appealing around, you know, all aspects of that major corner. Go ahead, next. So, obviously, this is the Central Business District, and we're trying to get a planned development on those parcels listed over there. The name of our company is A4 Holdings GC. Next. These are some current photos of the buildings, three buildings over there. You can see they have not been used in a long time. They're dilapidated, and they're, quite frankly, they're just an eyesore. And what we'd like to do is kind of refresh and rejuvenate that area of the business district over there. Next. So, over here is a little sketch of, you know, the proposed development, and as you'll see, it wraps around Middlebelt and Ford Road. We are trying to include plenty of green space in the area currently. There is, I don't believe there is any green space. It's just all parking lot, and it's, and again, it's just an eyesore right now. So, we're trying to get the best of, you know, of both worlds over here with commercial and residential and try to bring in, you know, young entrepreneurs and skilled people into the city. So, we're replacing it with a four-story building currently. It's, I believe, two and a half stories. So, we're looking to go four stories high. Again, Mario discussed that the first floor would be the commercial units, and the subsequent floors above it would all be residential units, and we would have some common space areas in those units as well. Go ahead. So, some of our studies indicated that, you know, to try to, you know, use the footprint that we have, it would be best not only economically, but, you know, for, you know, sustainability for growth over there, it would be to kind of divide the units where only 20% of the units would probably be studio spaces, 60% would be one-bedroom units, and about 20% would be two-bedroom units. You needed to have a little mixture of that, and we tried to, you know, incorporate the one-bedroom units as the highest amount of space. Now, this could change a little bit, but it's a pretty accurate, you know, assessment of what we're aiming to do over there. Go ahead. When we speak about common space for the areas of the residential portion, that's going to include the hallways and corridors, you know, the elevator shafts, lobbies, stairwells, if there's any mail or package rooms, mechanical electrical rooms, laundry rooms if they're shared. If not, they're going to be included individually per unit. And then the amenity spaces, which would include, you know, lounges or a fitness room or a community room someplace for people to gather so that, you know, I think on the studies that we did, you know, most common space areas in a building like this is about 10 to 12%. It could get up to 20% depending on how elaborate you want to get and make it more, you know, more wanted by the people that are renting. So, we're going to shoot, you know, between that 12 and 20% and try to make it as, you know, nice as we can for the residents, for the commercial users, while also, you know, of course, making sure that it's also economical for the business development plan as well. Next. So, the building height and floor heights, we kind of listed those over there. Total building height, the proposed building height is going to be between 66 and 72 feet. Typically, the commercial space is going to be the largest or the highest ceilings between 14 and 16 feet, and residential floors, you want them between 11 and 12 feet. I've seen other commercial developments go a little bit higher on them, but we're not trying to, you know, put a strain or ask for anything unnecessary for this development. I guess, you know, typically, the higher the ceilings, the more people would appreciate them or want them, but I think this is a fair assessment on what we're trying to do. Of course, the parapets are going to be an additional three to six feet. Now, if we're able to do a rooftop lounging area or common area up there with some green space up on the roof, then the parapets would obviously be a little bit higher. And we'll talk about that, I believe, on the next slide or soon after. But these are all consistent with, you know, modern buildings that are being built at this time. Go ahead. So, this is talking about the rooftop or green space and the cornice height. So, we're actively exploring green roof options to enhance sustainability, increase tenant amenities, and reduce stormwater runoff. If implemented, the green roof will require, will require an increase of approximately two to four additional square feet on the parapets or cornice height for safety railings. Now, that's not saying that the whole rooftop is going to be a green space. That can be very costly if we were to do that. So, we're trying to, you know, work with our architects and determine what would be necessary for an adequate green space for, you know, whether it's the commercial use or the residential use for them to just get out and enjoy some, you know, warm summer days or something and just have a better view of things and just, it should be, should be nice for gathering. I don't believe we've asked to exceed any of the height requirements on this. Go ahead to the next slide. This is talking about the exterior material recommendations. So, on the ground floor, currently, if you look at the Orin building, it has the limestone on the building. Limestone is a little bit more porous and a lot more expensive. So, we've talked with some of our developers, and we're looking to use some architectural block. This is what they use in downtown Plymouth. So, if you go downtown Plymouth on the bottom portions of the building where you see it looks like limestone, those are typically architectural blocks. And then on the upper floors, we're going to try to keep the red brick or in that family of red brick for the upper levels to maintain the historic district. And the cornice or parapets, obviously, is going to be stone or brick reinforced concrete. And then the rooftop is going to be the TPO or EDPM membrane wood sections designed for live load. That's what we're talking about for where the residents can gather and, you know, have a cup of coffee or whatever. So, this mix allows for modern articulation, low maintenance, and compatibility with adjacent development styles while aligning with cost efficiency targets. Next. So, the rendering is obviously conceptual. It's a conceptual idea, and the building was designed with the entrance representing the iconic Orin buildings. So, we are going to incorporate the clock that is known over here at the corner. The final site plan is going to be submitted to Garden City Commission because there's going to be some minor changes just to get, you know, the final approval on whatever we decide to do, and it'll be more accurate with the square footage, the number of units in the building, and the exact type of facade materials that we're going to be using in the windows. Next. That's a picture of what we're aiming to do. I don't know if you can zoom in on the clock, but the clock is right there in the corner of the building. We have some regressed, I think that's the word, for the patios. Instead of coming out to the street, they're incorporated inside of the units. So, it gives it a cleaner feel, safer feel, especially with, you know, the roads being right there with the high traffic. So, it kind of eliminates a lot of the noise as well for the people that want to sit outside. So, it's a cleaner look, and we're hoping that the residents in the city will appreciate that as well. Next. So, this is the, I believe this is the fifth parcel on Pardo Road. So, this has been submitted for additional parking to be approved by the Planning Commission and then hopefully by you guys over here where we are going to be using the, a big portion of that lot for further parking to make sure that there's enough parking spots for the units and the commercial space, drop-off zones and pedestrian permeability. We recommend formalizing this in the traffic and civil engineering set with curb cuts, turning gradient, and sidewalk connections. And I think that's, might be the last slide. Go ahead. So, in summary, the project is going to have a lot of benefits to the community moving forward. It's going to be a stimulus to further economic development in the area. It's going to be the, again, an iconic building and something that we're hoping that the residents and the business district over here will appreciate. If rezoned, incentives would include the Brownfield Plan using tax increment financing, MISHDA, MADC incentives as applicable, and our private investments and bank financing will be pursued in order to bring this project to completion. The Brownfield Plan will include income-restricted units in compliance with the Michigan State Housing Development Authority. And I believe that's, is there any questions?
We'll open up the public hearing. I'm sure you'll stick around and, for residents, have a question, they can bring it up and then we can answer them all at one time. So, at this point, thank you. At this point, I would open up the public hearing on this, on the proposal. Anybody wishing to speak from the public?
Good evening. My name is Fred May. I'm currently the chairman of the Planning Commission, and I just wanted to make a brief statement about this proposal because I'm excited about the opportunity presented by it. It has the potential to bring new life to our downtown. It will result in more housing, new employment opportunities, and more shopping to create the walkable downtown destination that we've been working towards for many years. Because of this, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend your approval. And with that, I'll leave it to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. May. Further comments from the public?
Yeah, I'm Morgan Price. I'm ZB, I'm blonde as ZBA, and I'm sort of against this because I feel that it's Business District right now, and we've had it for years. Orin Jewelers is 100 years this year, which is almost historical, you know? And plus, I mean, it's a beautiful-looking place and everything like that because you're going to have all the insets where people are going to have lawn chairs and everything sitting out in the thing, and you know how that looks on apartments, which you're going to be able to see that on Middlebelt and Ford Road. And then plus, you've got parking, people on Ford And then plus, you got parking, people on Porto that live on there gonna have umpteen traffic situations. You got a lot, you're talking, well, I don't know how many apartments, 60, which is two per person, that's 120 people. It's a lot of traffic. We got enough traffic on Ford Road and Middle Belt now. I think that, I understand that Owen Jewelers needs some upgrade, but it is 100 years old. It's, it's Garden City, Garden City's history. And we've got so much in this country that are tearing down history. We wanna build history. I mean, we need people in this city, but I don't think apartments is gonna do it. I think it's actively looking for businesses, 'cause we got a lot of places open and sure they're gonna have a business thing underneath the, the apartment, but we got so much open now, how do you know that's even not gonna be open? I mean, I just think it's a bad deal. I think it may look good right now, but I think down the road, we're gonna really regret what's going on, and I don't think, I think it should just stay Business District, build off of our, build on our future from our past and make it better, not like it's gonna be. That's all I have to say, but hopefully you council people join together and not, you know, be distension and do what's good for the people of Garden City, and that's what the main thing is, the people of Garden City. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments from the public? One more time, further comments from the public? Okay, I'll close that public hearing. Item 11 is our consent agenda.
Mayor.
Councilmember Whit.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A, 1 through 5, including 5A, 1 and 2, and 5B, 1.
Support. Support from Mayor Protem Dole. Discussion from the table? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Okay, on to our action items. Item 1 is our water and sewer rate ordinance that we just had a public hearing on. Motion is in order. Councilmember Whit.
Make a motion to adopt the ordinance to amend Sections 53.03 and 53.04 of Chapter 53, Title 5 of the City of Garden City Code, providing for rates and charges for water and sewer servicing and providing billing for water and sewage disposal services.
Support. Support from Councilmember King. Okay, discussion from the table?
Mayor.
Councilmember Karafodis.
I have some questions. So a lot of residents are asking, you know, the plan that we've come up with, we're calling it rip the Band-Aid, right? So the first year, it's 49 percent, so the average bill, it's $80, goes to 120. But a lot of people have been asking, what's the actual rate increase? Like, say, you know, we, we need $6.2 million. We have $6.2 million dropping our lap tomorrow. What's the rate increase?
If you had $6.2 million dropped in your lap tomorrow, I'm not sure what the change would be and-
Well, we've been saying how we haven't increased the rate since 2017. We need to catch up, so.
So I, I didn't look at it that way, and I can calculate that, but I, I don't have that number with me today.
Okay. And then, um, you know, we were given like four or five options. A lot of residents gave their own ideas on, on ways to save money. Um, one of them was doing it across the board and just saying, everybody in Garden City pays $50 on every single water bill for two years. That would make us the $6.2 million. And then, I think someone said earlier that we're worried about our rates, they never are gonna go down. If we put this Band-Aid on there, the 49 percent, then the 5, the 5, the 5, they're always gonna be on there, but if we did as it, like a service fee or something where it was just $50 per resident, it came off after two years. Do you have any idea how much, like I said, again, just the rate increase would be?
I, I do not have those calculations, um, but I agree, the rate's not going to go down because your costs are always gonna go up.
I'm not talking about the rate that we get from the, from the Water Authority. I realize that we didn't raise that, and that has to come up. I'm just talking about the, the difference to make that up compared to what we have to make up because we loaned it from our general fund and we spent all the rest of the money.
Yeah, I didn't look at it in those terms. We take the position that the city is currently in, in its water and sewer fund, and then we look at what the goal is after five years and all of the ins and outs that happen during those five years, but we don't break it down into, well, you know, this piece is gonna go toward this. We look at it from a 10,000-foot level, looking at the whole system holistically.
And basically, the whole system is we're $6 million short, and we need the money.
Yes, and, and rising.
And rising. And just so that everybody's clear, I know someone asked earlier about what happened to all the money. The money was spent for the Water Department only. It doesn't have anything to do with any other money. The Water Department, or the Water Fund is the Water Fund. That money goes into that fund only, and that money's spent for the Water Fund only.
Further, further comments from the table?
I just wanna thank both of you for your time that you've put into this. Took a lot, and I appreciate all the back and forths and all the different, you know, ideas that have come up, and you guys are trudging through it all, so I appreciate your time.
Okay. I, I would say this, um, I know we keep throwing around the percentage. It's gonna go up a certain percentage, which isn't completely accurate. If you cut back a little bit on your water usage, it's not gonna go up to that percentage. What it will go up in the first year with the Band-Aid is about $5.55 a unit. Uh, if you look on your bill, you go back, I think it has the last five bills on there, and you multiply 5, $5.55, that's how much your, your bill would go up this per, per unit. Uh, so if you use 10 units, going up $55 approximately. If you use three units, it's gonna go up about $15 to $20. To me, that's an easier way than trying to figure out a percentage, 'cause if you cut back on your water lawn, uh, watering your lawn, or again, showers, you got teenagers that like to live in there, cut them back a little bit, it's not gonna be a set percentage. So that's what I would say. And over the course of the five years, the, uh, three plans, the difference would be a total after five years of $8.77 to $9.53, with the Band-Aid being the cheapest of the three options. Councilmember Hughes.
I just wanted to point out that the bolt thing we talked about earlier would protect us from, um, from collecting excessive, um, monies, and then also, I noted that it was, um, in that what Lori was, was talking about, unjust benefits. So, um, we're protected by law that we can't just collect money and more money than we
Correct.
Yep.
Mayor.
Say, Councilmember Karafodis.
Uh, and I just wanna assure everybody that, that we have been presented with four and five options. It's not something, over the last couple of weeks, since we talked about this before, our city manager has been, uh, going through things with Plant Moran and going over and over and over, and we, we've had all those things for two weeks, and, um, all the other plans actually end up costing more in that five years. So when we say rip the Band-Aid, it is actually a percentage, because if you're a senior and, and your bill is very minimal at $80, you're not cutting back anything on your water. It's still going up 49 percent, period, that first year, and 5 percent every year after that, but that's still the cheapest version. On all the other suggestions that we had, in the long run after five years, it did go up more than, than what was recommended the first time.
Okay.
Mayor.
Councilmember Hughes.
Um, thank you. Um, I had a question about the start date, um, for, for the billing. Originally, I didn't, I didn't understand our, our billing cycle, so if you can explain that to people, you know, how, how and when they would anticipate, possibly anticipate their rate increase.
So, um, yeah, for that, if I could call up the treasurer, she'll be the expert on that one. I don't wanna butcher it.
So our city treasurer, Ms. Shannon Shepherd?
So the rates would go into effect July 1st, so whatever reads happened after July 1st is when the new bill, the new rates would go into effect. So if someone was on a, uh, actually, so like if someone was on a May, or I'm sorry, a June-July billing, half of their bill would be the old rates, half of their bill would be the new rates.
So we'll do a split bill?
If that's what the read dates are, yes.
Good.
Yep.
I have a question. So everybody filled up their pool in May, it's not the new rate?
Correct.
Okay. Further comments from the table?
Mayor. I just have a quick comment. I, I, I wanna point out that we had so many residents come up with ideas for this and bring them to, to, um, the city manager and to council, and that's, that's how we have to operate this city, so anytime, I mean, bring the ideas to us because they are listened to.
Mayor? Councilmember King.
Also to mention, um, for those of you who just listened to this council meeting, um, back in March, March 10th council meeting is when we proposed to go to Plant Moran to look into our water sewage, um, rates and come up with a, a plan to get us back on track. So it's just not numbers, it's pulling out of the air. We didn't rush Plant Moran. Um, there, there's been some time worked on this. Um, I think in April is when we called for the initial public hearing, and a lot of discussion at that point, before the actual public hearing took place, a lot of councils been working with the city manager on, okay, what's our options here? This is horrible. Um, but maybe it's the best of the worst, but still not very good. So there's a lot of discussion been going on all the way back from March, just so you, you may not see that piece of it, and I just wanna make sure everybody understands that.
Mayor.
Councilmember Hughes.
Um, I just wanna point out that, um, I appreciate the collaboration from the residents, and that's, I think, that's what I believe city council is, is here to do, is to collaborate with the residents. And like everybody said, there's been a lot of people who've come forward with, with suggestions to, you know, to remedy the situation, and I wanna thank each and every one because it's, it's something that has to, we have to, we have to figure this out, and five, 10, uh, yeah, 26,000 heads are better than seven, or 10.
King, thank you. Further comments from the table? Okay, from the public?
So again, Mayor, you said that the rates should have been raised, so my question is, what should have the rates been raised to? Because our rate is the same as neighboring cities. So we're supposed to be so much higher than the question begs an answer. What should we have been at?
All right, so I did a little experiment, like what if, what would we have had to done to be where we need to break even today?
No, the question is-
All right, wait, hold on.
Since 2017, rates went up and ours did not, is what has been said repeatedly over the last couple of months. So my question is, then what is, should the rates have been? Because when we look at neighboring cities, their rates are actually lower than ours. Not by much, but just to keep everything legit here, everybody's screaming for details, and that's what you see, people saying is, we get snippets of details. So what should the rate have been?
If you're done, I'll let you ask your question, otherwise you're gonna run out of time.
Okay, I have another question, too. Will businesses also be given this increased rate? So that they are participating towards this deficit? And then also, no, that's it.
Okay.
Do I get answers or I don't get answers?
You will.
Our city manager should answer.
Yep, no problem. Um, so if we'd have rose rates over the past six to seven years at a rate of 5 percent per year, um, we would've been fine. Somewhere around that, we would, so, um, then we would actually be bringing in the 12 million we need right now.
That wasn't her question. Her question was, when, when we didn't raise them because we had this $9 million, what were we supposed to raise them?
5 percent.
Okay.
So if we just consistently every year during that time, instead of an average of 1.9 percent, 5 percent, and then probably not spent as much, um, you know, but 5 percent would at least have us have our revenues match our expenses this year.
I guess the question is, was that the rate increase that we are getting from the Water Authority?
Um, I don't know if it matched the, the water rates for the Water Authority particularly, but I know based on today's number, we need to break even. If we would've started back then doing 5 percents each year, we'd be breaking even today, and the lion's share of our problem isn't the $6 million problem, it's the 15 million we've gotta come over the next five to break even each year. So if, had we raised it 5 percent with compounding, you know, when you raise something 5 percent, then you raise 5 percent again, it compounds, and over that time would've put us at about $12 million worth of revenue.
So it's not always just the rate from the Water Authority, it's our operational, what we need to operate.
Correct. If, you know, if you see inflation, it, it just, everything from employees to vehicles to everything increases, um, so, you know, inflation goes up, so must cost, and able to do the same thing you were doing before. And yes, businesses will, uh, pay the same water rates as everybody else.
Is part of that also included in the Water Fund, um, some salaries, which include benefits and everything?
Correct.
So some benefits of the Water Department, or some staff in the Water Department get paid out of the Water Fund?
Correct.
Okay. Further public comment?
The question was asked by this lady here, that as the businesses get in the same rates as the, as the public, because that would bring down the rates a lot faster than just letting them slide with a percentage so much less, so you are saying that they're, everybody's gonna be equal across board?
Yes.
Okay, so that'd be good, because then maybe we can get this down faster. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments? No more comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes 6-1. Item 2, uh, General Appropriations Ordinance.
Mayor.
Councilmember Whit.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Fiscal Year 2025-26 Fund 592 Appropriations Ordinance as presented.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Hughes. Further comments from the table? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Okay, item 3 is the rezoning, uh, request for the lots on Ford Road.
Mayor.
Councilmember Dole.
I'd like to move to approve the rezoning of the 1.61 acre site at 29317, 29299, and 29217 Ford Road, from CBD, Central Business District, to PD, Plan Development, based on the findings of fact summarized in the attached review letter in compliance with the Plan Development Standards of Zoning Ordinance Section 154.334. I'm not done.
You paused.
Sorry. There was a period there. The rezoning approval being contingent upon the items cited by the Planning Commission and the applicant completing all required steps of the Plan Development Process outlined in the zoning ordinance.
Support.
Okay, support by Councilmember Karafodis. Comments from the table?
Mayor.
Councilmember Hughes.
Mr. Ortega, I have a couple of questions about parking. Um, earlier you said 94 spots, but I see there's 97 spots listed here.
Yes, that'd be, um-
In the, in the paperwork?
I think there might, yeah, 97. Whatever's in there would be, that's on, the onsite parking spaces. Part of the discussion the Planning Commission had with the applicant, and the applicant has responded, and they mentioned their details, is there will be an additional, they own property across Pardo in the south, and there'll be additional parking because the Planning Commission felt that was necessary.
Thank you. Um, I was wondering, it, with 97 parking spots, is that just for the residential, for the apartments?
Well, with the, uh, Phase 2 that will be going on on the south side of the property, the applicant will have the options to possibly designate the ones on the south for either residents designated specifically, or maybe parking spaces on the north specifically, or also employees, so they will, so, um, this process tonight is one of the first steps because you're approving the, the, the Plan Development Plan. The applicant is required to come back to the Planning Commission to answer those specific requirements, uh, specifications in the site plan approval, so that's their next step in the process.
Okay.
So, um, right now, they're options, but they're-
Do we have any idea what total number parking that we're looking at? Because I know that we're looking at Dunkin' Donuts, and for their, um, second tenant, they would have in that property, we listed, um, five spaces per 1,200 square feet, and we have 20,000 square feet for commercial and, um, retail. So that, right there equates 83 parking spaces just for the commercial and retail.
Mm-hmm. And they're proposing 73 on the south side.
Okay, so the total would be?
160.
Okay, all right. And then the other thing is, um, we're reducing the outdoor space. Um, it's recommended to have, um, I think it's 21,000 square feet. It's recommended to have, I think it's 21,000 square feet, and the minimum is 10,000.
That's correct.
And then they're proposing 8,500 square feet. Is there a particular reason why we would drop it from recommend, recommendation of 21,000 to 10,000, and then down to 8,500? Is that because we got to have extra space on the rooftop?
That's correct, that's part of it. And one aspect of this is that if this was being developed under our standard Central Business District regulations, then they would be providing the 21,000 square feet. However, they're actually, as part of the Plan Development Process, they're allowed to request this modification in certain of the numbers, such as the modification to the height and the modification to the open space. And that can be compensated through other aspects of the development. And in this case, it'd be the open space on the top they're considering, and also the type of materials and design and the construction of the building. So they're trying to compensate for that modification.
Thank you very much.
Okay, further, Councilmember?
Dole.
Councilmember Dole.
Going back to the parking, we've got 94 spaces listed in the paperwork. But I do have a question, because you say that the 2.2 parking spaces is outdated, it's an outdated standard, but you don't list what the new standard is.
So that comment was in regards to the fact that currently, it is our requirement, and it is the requirement that they have 2.2 parking spaces. In my experience with the various communities that McKenna has serviced, typically you can have that parking space requirement for multifamily structures to be about 1.5 to 1.3 per dwelling unit. However, so that's why I mentioned that in terms of the original request of having only the 94, and how close that would get to a modern standard. The Planning Commission felt that while that might be modern and other, acceptable in other communities at the time, it'd be best to have that additional parking. So therefore, jumping from the 94 spaces onsite to the additional 73, adding those on the south side. So getting it up to very close to 2.2, if not equal to.
And I have several questions, actually. Is this, is this build first time for you? Something that's like this? I mean, I know you have other businesses...
We have another owner here.
My name is Sam, I'm actually Albert's partner and his younger brother. It's one of many developments that we've done. We've constructed multifamily homes, we've constructed strip centers, restaurants, standalone buildings, even single-family homes. So the extent of experience in development spans over the course of 50-plus years being passed on from my father and then on to us. So I think it's definitely a strong suit within the family and within our partnerships. But not only that, the most important part of this is that we hired the state's leading consulting firm to help us with this. So when it comes down to all the little details that we could potentially miss, those are going to be caught by the professionals. And I'm always in favor of hiring professionals to do the job correctly.
Okay, what's the timeframe?
From the time that we get a shovel into the ground, it would be approximately two years. To get a shovel in the ground is dependent on the city's administration and approval process.
Okay. If the four stories is approved, and then possibly additional height, depending on if you get the green space on the roof, do we have any issue with the fire department? Is fire going to be able to access that?
That's a good question.
That was an issue discussed with the Planning Commission. We're fortunate that the Planning Commission Chair has some experience with that issue, but we also, I've had informal discussions with the fire department, and they say that won't be, won't be an issue. In addition to that, during site plan review, the fire department will have an opportunity to look at all the plans and then provide a review letter confirming that the height will not be an issue for them. In addition to anything else, that they will be required to construct, to make the building as safe as, as required by ordinance.
Okay. When the Planning Commission did their public hearing, I know what you required to notify everybody within so many feet. So how many residents did that actually include?
So it goes out within 300 feet. I don't have the exact number, but I could potentially find that for you in one second.
It should maybe a couple of houses on the...
At least, yeah, because you have, you know, people down the street further on Pardo, and then even getting a little bit to the west and the other side of Middlebelt.
Okay. And I ask that because the downtown belongs to everybody in this city, not just the businesses that are within 300 feet. And I really think that maybe we should have looked at that when we did the public hearing and let a lot more residents know that this was going on, so that they could have come and had a say in this. So if we approve the PD, and something happens, and maybe, let's say you guys decide to sell the property, does the PD go with that?
The PD does run with the land, the rezoning. However, there is a timeframe within the zoning ordinance that they have to get that final approval. And then the site plan itself has a one-year requirement. So after they receive site plan approval, it has a one-year timeframe in order to obtain the actual building permit. Technically, they can ask for an extension with the Planning Commission for an extra year, but that one year is a requirement of ordinance that's built in.
Okay, is there, I don't want anybody to take this the wrong way. Is there any way to ensure that it does not become low-income housing?
So certain aspects of that, as the applicant did mention, they were going to be utilizing TIF funds through Wayne County. And part of that does require the potential for Wayne County to ask for modification for low to moderate. But what that means is 80% of the area median income. The area median income, in general, from the actual Detroit area, is about $85,000. So that means the requirements would be that someone would have to make around $66,000-ish to be, they would be, meet that criteria for low to moderate, and then fulfill one of those. And that would only be for a certain number of units within the building.
So that's, that's based off of Wayne County, not just Garden City?
Yeah, that's correct. So the larger area. And depending on the numbers at that time, based on, they tend to get updated from time to time.
Okay, so lastly, I have to ask, because this has been the main thing that I've heard from people, when you drive by Orin Jewelers, you know you just drove through Garden City. And there are a lot of people upset that that building's going to go down. So is there, did you look at, by any chance, did you look at possibly keeping that, just that part of it, that corner piece, the jewelry store, somehow keeping that and building around it?
I'll let the property owner answer that, but one thing I'll point out is if you look at the rendering, because that was a concern of the administration, and that was a concern of the Planning Commission. This is not the first rendering that they provided, they had a different design. We mentioned that specifically. We also mentioned that we would like the building to be designed to be more, what I would call a traditional Midwest downtown, meaning brick, meaning masonry more substantial, more, a nicer, attractive mass with articulation. But to answer your question, the Orin Jewelers building, it is, it is the limestone color and material, and then there is that beveled edge right at Ford and Middlebelt, and there is at the very top, I know it's on the second floor, but there is, the clock, as mentioned, with the curve cutout for that along the cornice line. The rendering for this issue shows that entire, now it would be masonry block and high-quality concrete block along the, on the entire elevation along the, both Ford and Middlebelt, and then with the same color as it is now, and material, and then having that beveled edge right at Ford and Middlebelt, and having that arched for the clock. So we feel that's...
I definitely noticed, I noticed all that.
So it's an attempt.
I appreciate that, that that went, you know, that you took the time to try to recreate some of that for us.
It's an attempt.
It was a question, it's been asked.
It's a totally valid question, and to not sugarcoat the whole process, I mean, it's really difficult to put these size developments together from a financial perspective. My background, I'm actually a CPA. So when I get in front of the bankers and we're sitting, we have to present a responsible development. The numbers have to, the numbers have to be perfect in order for a bank to give us any sort of approval. So going back to talk about the low-income housing, unfortunately, and fortunately, I mean, depending on which perspective you have on it, although to some, it looks like a negative, it's done in a way where it, we're preserving and protecting the identity of the building. We're making sure that we're bringing in a strong professional population into the building, to reside in the building. So I think that's, you know, that's one, one part of it. The second part of it is, it's been difficult trying to check off every single box that the residents have concerns about, which we've been made aware of, as well as the administration. And we've done everything to pay tribute to the 100 years that Orin spent here. I love Mr. Orin, wonderful man. I still visit him in downtown Northville. But in order to take things to the next level, and for us to take Garden City and truly try to create a downtown feel, there are going to have to be some sacrifices. We're not asking for a ton, and believe me, we sacrificed a lot. This went from a very viable investment to barely making it. I mean, they are razor-thin margins on the entire development for us. And it's not just for us, it's for our partners, too. I mean, you, we have to consider the bank as a partner. They have just as much say-so as us, because if they don't give us that final approval, we simply don't move forward with the project. It's that simple. But we really did try to pay tribute, we're trying to incorporate the clock, we're trying to incorporate the limestone, and trying to make everybody happy. In ideal situation, we would have loved to keep the building up, but unfortunately, then, that does not create any sort of development for the downtown. And some of them, the interiors of the building are in really rough shape. We looked at them, I love rehabilitating spaces. I actually rehabilitated a space from 1896, the Wagner Space, that I partnered with Ford Motor, Ford, Ford Land on Michigan and, Michigan and, I don't know how I, I'm forgetting, Michigan and Monroe Street. So we rehabbed 6,300 square feet of their most iconic corner, and they entrusted that to me. And we did a wonderful job, and it's now, has been passed on to its new owner, and we love doing it, and we loved taking an old space and making it beautiful again. And believe me, when we went into these buildings, we tried. I mean, that's ideally the best, the best path forward, but it made no sense, and it was impossible. And not, not myself nor any other developer is going to be able to do that and have it be financially viable. And I think at the end of the day, without lying to ourselves, if these projects aren't financially viable, they just won't move forward. But the one last point that I'll make is, I truly believe that this will kickstart what we need in that downtown district. That is exactly what you need, somebody to go in there, create something, and then people start to build off of it. And I think that we're on a really good path forward with it. We've got the right partners on board, we've partnered with the MEDC, we've partnered with Mishda, we've partnered with Fishbeck. So I feel really confident about it, I feel really good about the development overall. And we hope that you guys will trust us in this, as other developers like Ford Land have trusted, trusted me on these, on these builds. So, is there any other questions?
That's all I had, thank you.
Thank you.
Further comments from the table?
Mayor?
Councilmember Karafodis.
You can just come back up. Okay, so going off what Mr. Ortega said, 8%, so we're talking 12 units that are going to be income restricted?
Yeah. I mean, and the income restriction is not too crazy. I mean, it's still 66,000, so it's a fair income.
I'm all about increasing our population in Garden City and improving our downtown. We all wish that the Orin building could stay, but I realize that it probably can't. One gentleman mentioned about the patios, I think that was a great design to keep them on the inside, but is there going to be, like, any HOA rules about, like, what that could be like, considering it's in the downtown?
I'm a control freak, if you've ever seen one. If you look at any one of my buildings, they are perfect, from the interior to the exterior. I maintain great relations with our tenants and really strict standards, because it's important that every development that we put up is something that is aesthetically pleasing. And I've proven that time and time again, through multiple administrations.
And you talked about the bank and funding and the timeline being two years. Do you have the funding now? Or is that...
That's, that's the magic that happens behind the scenes. So we need your approvals to go back, to show the bank. We have, if you're asking about us personally, liquidity, and are we financially viable to do this?
I understand it's going to take six more months on top of the two years before the funding comes through to start.
That's going to happen concurrently with your approval process.
Okay.
So we'll overlap all of those submittals with the submittals to the city, and hopefully try to cut down on that as much as possible.
Okay.
We want to get this thing built and tenanted as quickly as possible. It's sat vacant for too long, we've jumped through, jumped over way too many hurdles, and, but I feel like we're getting there now.
Okay, and then you talked about concerns that, you know, profit margins and stuff are razor-thin. We've had some other builders in our city that didn't follow what they told us they were going to follow, plan-wise, right? And so we think that it's going to look one way, and it ends up not looking that way. I mean...
That's, that's a, I mean, without sugarcoating it, that's always a risk in every development. I can't sit here and guarantee anything other than my track record and what we've done in the past.
I think, I think that part of the plan is that, once we have everything put together, it's going to come back in front of the Planning Commission for, you know, final approval.
Yeah, I just think that...
So you'll see the material that's used, you'll see the exact layout.
She's saying, well, I think you're saying during the build, things will change potentially? Is that what the concern is?
That's exactly what I'm worried about. So we've approved what things are supposed to look like, and they don't end up looking like that. And when I hear you give your presentation on the summary about, well, we might do this, or we might do that, we might make it a green space on the roof, or we may do that, then...
So, so yeah, the green space on the roof is something that we talked about in our last meeting. It's something that we're not against incorporating, so long as it makes sense. Once we get the blueprints together and we can propose it, you know, to the bank with, you know, the numbers and everything, then they'll let us know. We're in no way, like, trying to cut corners in any way. And again, if you look at some of the projects that we've been a part of, they're all, you know, great projects, and...
It's a beautiful building, the design's beautiful.
Not to sell my brother short, he sat as the Chair of the Commission for the Downtown Development Authority in West Dearborn, and was, and I'll say that he was the reason for the, or the catalyst for the boom that happened in downtown West Dearborn, just as one of several projects that we've done. And we partnered with the right people from, you know, Fishbeck, which was highly recommended by the state. We've taken every consideration that the city has given us. We're working with Mina Chamber over here, who's helped guide us along the way, Mishda, MEDC. We're going through all the right routes to give the city of Garden City an opportunity to grow and increase their tax base, so that, you know, because I think the main purpose of this board right here is to try to make sure that you guys are sustainable and viable for the city, for future growth. We're in the world of hurt right now with our financial and economic situation, and this is why, you know, when you talk about, the gentleman over here had a concern about, you know, maintaining an old space and not redeveloping it. Well, sometimes it doesn't make financial sense, and then we get ourselves into situations where we're in the negative budget, and then what are you going to have? You're going to have another building that can't rent out, goes into foreclosure, is dilapidated, things like that. And we don't want to run into those problems. So when you're talking about maintaining a 100-year-old building and going up another two stories, reinforcing the foundation underneath, and trying to create that and build around it where it all looks uniform, it's impossible. So there are some sacrifices that need to be made on every party, and we've made plenty of sacrifices, the city has made sacrifices, and the residents, I hope, will understand that these sacrifices, that whatever we're asking for is going to be for the greater good of the community. It's not just for us. It's very easy for us to just walk away and find another project. But we really love revamping and redoing things, and our history shows it, our track record shows it. But thank you very much.
And then, just two more questions. How much retail is going to be on the... And then just two more questions. How much retail is going to be on the item?
So there's 20,000 square feet of retail on the first floor, and then that'll get divided up based on demand.
Is it just going to be stores? There's going to be restaurants?
We're hoping a strong tenant mix. I don't want to see all restaurants in there. I'd love to see some boutiques, maybe a hairdresser, especially for the tenants upstairs, a couple good restaurants. And again, I mean, it really just depends on who comes forward to actually lease the space.
I'm looking forward to this building.
Thank you. We really are, too. I mean, I think it's going to be a beautiful space. I really, I'm excited for this one.
Mayor? Councilmember Hughes.
I want to thank you. I believe this is going to be a catalyst for the downtown development area.
The last comment I'll make is we've talked about how we're, the city's landlocked for, we can't expand out with residents. We can't bring in houses. So this was one of the items that the planning commission had taken under to try and go up and bring in residents. I think if it's done right, which it looks like it will be, I think it's going to be a really good idea and a really good, again, catalyst, something to bring people in. Further comments from table, from the public. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Congratulations. Item four is special land use for 28484 Ford Road, which is going to be our long-awaited Dunkin', Dunkin' Donuts.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. But before you, is this special land use request for, to establish a multi-tenant commercial building with a restaurant drive-through window at 28484 Ford? The subject site is currently vacant, but it has some surface improvements or remnants, I should say, of the previous use on the site. And the applicant is proposing to redevelop the site and establish a two-tenant building with a drive-through window. The primary tenant would be a Dunkin'. The site is zone C3, and within the district, drive-throughs do require special land use approval in going through this process. On June 12th, the planning commission held a public hearing regarding the proposed rezoning. During the public hearing, there was no one present to provide comments. There was one written comment received, which spoke about the aspect of drive-through use and associated negative aspects of sometimes of uses that aren't maintained properly. But the commission considered all the issues and has recommended that the city council approve of the proposed special land use contingent upon the applicant complying with the conditions of site plan approval. And then site plan approval was also considered and granted by the planning commission at that same meeting, contingent upon the applicant receiving this special land use approval and addressing several minor issues with regards to the site plan. I will note that since that meeting, we have met with the applicant and the architect for that property, and they have already discussed with us ways to address some of the issues regarding that were outstanding on the site. Specifically, they found a solution for loading and for deliveries to the site. So the city council may choose to either make a motion that in your determination, no further discussion is necessary after this evening, and grant the special land use approval for the drive-through window at this location. Or if you determine addition of discussion and delay is necessary, you may make a motion to continue discussion of this proposed drive-through window and require the application be added as agenda item at a future meeting. I can take any questions at the appropriate time. And we also have this evening with us, the property owner for the site and their architect to answer specific questions.
I want to stand up just so the council can see. Thank you. Right, thank you.
Okay, first motion is in order. Mayor, Councilmember King?
I move that the city council choose not to take the application for the restaurant with drive-through window service, special land use at 28484 Ford Road. Under further consideration, that the city council concurs with the planning commission's recommendation and that the special use approval becomes final.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Hughes. That was option?
Oh, it was Councilmember Karafotis?
It was Mayor Karafotis.
Hold on.
Mayor Karafotis.
Councilmember Karafotis, and we are for option one, then. Correct? We're going to take the recommendation of the planning commission.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, further comment from table?
Mayor?
Councilmember Karafotis.
They're asking for this just because it's going to be a drive-through? That's what...
That's correct. In the C3, it requires a special use.
It used to be a rallies a long time ago. Was it a drive-through then?
It was then, but back in the day, when the rallies was granted approval, we did not require the special land use in the C3. It was a use that was permitted by Wright. So that's why procedurally, it does require us now at this point in time to get this approval. The benefit of it going through this approval process is now it does run with the land. So it can't, it will be there in perpetuity, the ability to establish a drive-through there.
Okay, thank you.
Further comments from the public. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Congratulations. Thank you. Okay, item five is annual renewal for Civic Plus. Our communications director, Mr. Zach King.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you is the Civic Plus annual renewal for our website. Also included in this renewal, something we did a few months ago when I brought to you guys is See Click Fix, the chatbot, and the mobile app, is we rolled all these dates into one renewal, July 1st. Makes it a little bit easier to bring it to you guys yearly, and it aligns with our budget year, so you don't have to have contracts against different budget years. So bringing it to you a little earlier this year for the July 1st, when this contract does start. I'll take the opportunity to give you a little update about those few other things that was previously approved, the chatbot, See Click Fix, and the mobile app. The chatbot is already running on the website. They let us launch it earlier than planned, so residents are already using that. Staff is making improvements to that every day as we answer more and more questions. For See Click Fix, our goal, we can't go live until July 1st. We'll be pretty close on to that. Right now, we're moving on to training staff. The system is set up and working. We're going to start training the staff on how to respond to those issues, do a test, run with it for a little bit before making it live. And then the mobile app, we're actually waiting on Apple. The city had to apply for a developer account with Apple before we can publish our app. So we're working on the app right now, but really, it seems like we're waiting for Apple to give us that permission to publish the app. Some notes about this contract. Previously, we had a 5% increase on our website since we got them around eight years ago. With that latest contract, it's only a 2% uplift every year now. So it is reflected in these numbers. It's only a 2% increase. Of the invoice in front of you, $11,448 of it is the website itself. The rest is the See Click Fix, the chatbot, and the mobile app. Technically, this was approved before the additional funds through the motion a few months ago when it came. But because it's all in one invoice, I want to wrap it all together and not overconfuse it. So unless you have any questions?
Okay, motion is in order.
Mayor?
That Councilmember Dole, possibly?
I'd like to motion to approve the attached agreement with Civic Plus LLC, the city's website and software provider, regarding the renewal of our annual website's content management system, See Click Fix, and mobile app, and in an amount of $26,738.52.
Support. Or from Councilmember King, further discussion from table?
Mayor?
Councilmember Hughes.
I just want to congratulate you on the changes so far on our website, the larger tiles and the ability to have the banner, you know, changed with greater ease, you know, for events and pictures of the events that we've hosted and things like that. So I've used it, and I think we're great changes and great improvement.
Yep. And just so you know, the website refresh that we did that we just published doesn't actually coincide with any of this. Civic Plus gives that to their customers every five years. So we already had one about five years ago. We kind of ramped up, and while we're adding all this stuff, we did a little earlier, because it was about four years ago we did the last one. So we were able to revamp the website. And excitingly, hopefully this week, we'll get done with the navigation. So navigation will be new for this site as well. That's not included with the refresh, and the plan was reused at the same time, but with some delays with some of the other projects going on, that will be coming this week. So it'll be a little easier to navigate as well.
Oh, good. Thanks.
But the buttons were a big part of the navigation to get people to the pages quicker.
Yeah, that's much needed.
Yep.
Thank you so much.
Okay, further comments. Councilmember Dole?
Forgive me, because I don't know completely what I'm talking about here. But there's a mandate out there due April 2027, something about making our websites more accessible. So are they working on that?
Actually, some of the refresh, a lot of the stuff, we did go up to the new ADA standards. That requirement has been pushed back several times now, but we are already meeting the majority of those standards. The only thing we have left with ADA requirements on the website is ensuring all the PDFs uploaded to our site are also ADA. We're working towards that. We're getting all the stuff switched over that is on the website that's out of date. And it's taken a lot of staff's time, you know, even the building department had just recently finished that, and we got all those documents updated. So the site itself is fully compliant to the newest standard already. But a lot of those outsourced links, we link to other sites, and our documents need to keep moving along. So we'll be there before then.
Yeah, because I did, I heard from another source in the city that's dealing with this, that the PDFs are actually a huge problem, and they're very time-consuming to get them to switch over.
Yep. Yeah, especially because sometimes you might not even know where the original document is anymore. We have a, actually, when I just recently found online, we were able to edit it, was a guide for putting in fences. It was a really old document that was there, but we were able to find it and restore it, so.
Okay, cool. All right, thanks.
Yep.
Just curious.
Yep.
Further comments from table, from the public. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Okay, item six is calling for a public hearing on sale of city property, vacant lot. Motion is in order.
Mayor?
Councilmember Witt?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the execution of the purchase agreement and call for a public hearing for July 21st, 2025, at 7:00 PM for the sale of parcel 35015050449001, vacant Arcola Street, for $1,000 to Hussein Gaeth, 1060 Arcola, Garden City, Michigan, 48135.
Support. Or from Mayor Protem Dold. Comments? There's not a lot to say, because we're just calling for a public hearing, but for the public, what this is, is it's a 16-foot adjacent lot to a homeowner who asked about the, if he could purchase it. The city somehow owns it. We cannot use it really for anything. So that is what the, this is going to be about, and that's what we're calling for a public hearing on. Any further comment about the public hearing from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Item seven, DTE agreement for LED streetlight conversion. Mr. Gibbons, you got anything on this?
I'm actually Mr. Miller's.
Or Mr. Miller.
Mr. Miller's the expert on this particular topic. I don't know an expert, but I do know something about it. How about that? Take the compliment. Okay. So this is all part of our Eagle grant that we, the city, obtained for streetlight conversion to LED. So a while back, I came to the council to get an approval for the agreement with the state, so that they would be able to encumber money for us. And then part of that whole process of the grant is that the streetlights are really owned by DTE. We pay a user fee for them, for the maintenance and also the operation. And so part of that is that DTE does have to do the work and also work on doing the conversion over to LED. This contract is for $84,905.38. This is actually for the conversion of 518 streetlights in the city. Part of the packet I gave you did include, you know, a map of the entire city and all those dots everywhere. And it's getting, it's getting a lot of them done, actually. Each dot represents a streetlight in front of a house along a street. So 518 will be converted. And these are all the 70-watt mercury vapor light style. And so we kind of, in this grant, I wrote it so that we would kind of lump all of those together. Those are, we have the most of those streetlights in the city. The next grant, which we did receive, eligible to get the funding in 2028, will kind of do the cleanup. So the other wattages and things like that will do the cleanup. I kind of thought we would get the first grant first, and this one second, but the state had different ideas. But I want to enter into the agreement with DTE and get moving as soon as we can to make the change and start saving some funds.
Thank you. Just an FYI, our...
Yeah, there's no man.
Oh, there's no, I apologize.
The dots got eaten or something.
They got eaten.
Miss Pac-Man came through there. Okay, motion is in order. Mayor? Councilmember King?
I move to approve the agreement with DTE for the conversion of 518 streetlights to LED for an amount not to exceed $84,905.38, due to be paid by an Eagle grant.
Support.
Or from Councilmember Hughes, further discussion from table?
Mayor?
Councilmember Dole?
I don't, possibly I missed it. Did you say how many streetlights we still have that are not LED?
I, roughly over 300, I believe, will be finished up by the rest.
So when they, I'm sorry, when they complete this 500 and some, all of them will be LED in the city?
No, we still have more to go. So the next grant that we are eligible to receive the funds in 2028 will complete all of our streetlights to LED.
At that point, they'll all be done?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Okay, we did say that. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, further comments from table, from the public. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Okay, fuel purchase contract. Our DPW director, Mr. Brad Omen.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is to approve a three-year contract for the purchase of gasoline and diesel fuel. This fuel is for all city vehicles and equipment. On average, we purchase about 40,000 gallons of gasoline and about 18,000 gallons of diesel fuel every year. The base amount that we are charged for the fuel is defined by the National Index, which is tracked daily by the agency known as OPUS. We did receive four bids for this. Gen Oil was the lowest responsible bidder. They have provided this service for us for the past three years and has did a great job.
Motion is in order.
Mayor?
Councilmember Hughes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve a three-year contract for gasoline and diesel fuel with Gen Oil Company of Troy, Michigan, in the amount not to exceed $175,000 per year.
Support. Or from Councilmember Witt, further discussion from table, from the public. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Since you're still there, street sweeping services.
Thank you, Mayor. I regret having to bring this back to you, because you did approve a contract on March 17th for the service. Deck contractor conducted the spring sweeping, and it wasn't up to my standards. And our residents, it wasn't what they expected and what they deserved. We did exercise our right in the termination of this contract. So I'm bringing this back to you this evening to approve a contract with Progressive Sweeping. They have been our sweeping contractor for the past six years. I have determined they are the lowest responsible bidder based on the quality of their performance. And this contract will represent a summer and fall sweep in year one, a spring, summer, and fall sweep in year two and three. The service is paid by major and local road funds.
Thank you. Motion is in order.
Mayor?
Councilmember Witt?
I'd like to make a motion to approve a three-year contract for street sweeping services to Progressive Sweeping of Toledo, Ohio, in an amount not to exceed $184,196.
Support. Or from Mayor Protem Dole, discussion from the table?
Mayor?
Councilmember Karafotis?
This is the company that we had previously that we got rid of to get the new company that was bad, right?
Yep.
Okay, that's all.
Mayor? Councilmember King?
I guess just to throw out there a comment, I guess. I do think it was worth a try with the other contractor, only because of the savings. It was a 40% savings compared to Progressive. Progressive.
Oh, absolutely.
However, 100% agree it didn't work out, so we're rectifying it and going back to the other contractor. But a 40% decrease is a significant cost savings, so I do think it was worth it.
Mayor.
Councilmember Dole.
How many times are we legally responsible to clean the roads every year?
One time a year is required by the state through our stormwater plan, and we do it three.
Okay. Do we do it twice? Well, I was just, you know, it's, each time we do it, it's $23,000. If we cut out two times, you know, we're still doing it twice a year. Is it that much more advantageous to do it a third time?
Well, the spring sweep is really the big one. Summer helps out leading to the fall, and the fall's another big sweep because we're getting all the leaves off the catch basins before winter.
That's what I think, spring and fall, you know, do it in the spring and fall. I don't, just a suggestion to cut out summer and save a little bit more money.
Mayor. Councilmember King.
Yeah, the only, the only concern I would have is, I guess, track cars, not parking and not letting a sweeper take care of that portion of the curb. Granted, it still may be worth saving the money and not having that third one, but that's one benefit to the third street, or having a third street cleaning. I also mentioned, I don't know if our residents, we only do streets with catch basins, correct?
Curb, curb streets.
Curb streets, okay. Thanks.
Further comments? I would say I heard a lot of complaints about our street sweeping from the last one, so I'm really happy to move on from that company. I think they did more damage than they did Progressive. The only thing I would like to see is a little better notification to our residents about when we're coming through in the areas. And I know these guys in the past have been pretty particular or, when, when they say they're going to be there on a certain day, they're usually there that day. So where the last company was a hit and miss for an entire week, a little better signage, and I think we can really get better at it, so.
Yes.
I'm happy.
Mayor.
Councilmember King.
Just another point on that, I guess, maybe code red now that people tie their address to it, maybe it's something we can utilize for street sweeping where NIXIL wouldn't work for, you know, citywide, but.
Yes. I also purchased 250 more signs, so we're definitely going to get them out.
Perfect, thank you. Further comments from table? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Item 10 is Radcliffe Center gym renovation contract. Motion, Ms. Erica Smith, our Parks and Recreation Director.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. First item that I've got tonight is approval of a contract. As a reminder, we have a Radcliffe Committee meeting on some of the grant spending priorities. So tonight, there's four sort of subprojects within this contract, all focusing on gymnasium. This is a big area, really from the original grant proposal was to enhance our gym capabilities. So what we have tonight is approval of all phases to complete electrical work. This is both lighting, some relocation of panels, some of the prep work for the basketball hoops, which I'll talk about in a moment. It also includes an area to expand our fitness center operation, so moving that to a larger space includes flooring, electrical paint, carpentry work. In the gymnasium where the stage has been removed, the flooring, which is currently concrete, would be, this is the next item, was not replacing, but adding a multipurpose flooring in there in just the new area. And then lastly, smaller project to relocate the audio storage. It's putting closet doors on an adjacent room. So those are the four projects in the first item for $100,409. We're also asking for $10,000 in contingency with all phases. Any questions?
Mayor.
Well, let's go motion first.
Okay. To move to approve all phases, ceiling and carpentry of Garden City, Michigan, as contractor to complete the identified gym renovation projects that include gym, electrical, flooring, fitness area, and storage doors in the amount of $100,409, with an additional $10,000 approved as contingency funds for the project.
Support. Or from Councilmember King. Discussion from table?
Mayor.
Councilmember Dole.
I just wanted to, to reiterate for everybody that this is grant money, correct?
Yes, yes, this is the grant project, and we've got about four months left of our grant project, so we're making a big push, but yes, all grant funded.
Thank you.
Further comments from table?
Mayor.
Councilmember Hughes.
Just a quick question about the game room, the new accommodations, will we be able to move everything there?
Yeah, like the fitness equipment that we're moving into the existing game room?
Oh, no, the, the things that are in the game room right now, the pool table and all that stuff, will the accommodations fit everything?
They should, yes. We're still working on layouts and some of those details, but the plan is to keep all of those things in their new location, for sure.
Thank you. Further comments from table? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. On to page two. Item 11, gym basketball hoops and gym dividers.
Okay, kind of following up on the gym work that we're doing, this is to bring in at long last, some basketball hoops. So we've got four individual hoops that will retract up into the ceiling. They will also have capacity to lower down for youth basketball, in addition to two dropdown dividers, which will give us three spaces so we could separate activities and have three different uses going on at once. And those together are a big ticket item for us, $59,230,000, which is again qualifies for grant reimbursement.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Councilmember King.
I move to approve Carter Crompton Incorporated of Clough, Michigan, as contractor to provide and install basketball hoops and gym dividers at Radcliffe Center in the amount of $59,230.
Support. Support from Councilmember Witt. Discussion from table?
Mayor.
Councilmember Hughes.
Just a quick question, is there a completion date on the, on the agreement for this? Because I know we're in a hurry to get things done.
With the basketball?
Yeah.
Yep. When we send out our deposit, it'll be about six weeks anticipated for the basketball installation.
And then lastly, I wanted to say I, the renovation, the painting on bathrooms in the park looks great.
Okay.
Further comments from table? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Item 12 is 2425 budget amendment. I will call up our treasurer, Ms. Shannon Shepherd.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is just kind of like a year-end tidying of the books. We've got a few adjustments to be made in the general fund. There's changes on both sides, revenues and expenditures in equal amounts, so that's a net zero effect on the fund. It's just, like I said, just kind of tidying up, making everything even there. For the capital projects fund, it appears that no expenditures were originally budgeted in that fund, so this amendment just corrects that, adding both revenues and expenditures in equal amounts. So again, no, no, no impact on the fund. It's a net zero effect. The water and sewer fund, obviously hot topic. Our expenditures have exceeded what the originally budgeted amount was, and since there's no additional revenues to offset that increase, the difference will have to be covered by the use of fund balance there.
Motion, Mayor Protem Dole.
Move to approve the fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget amendments.
Support.
Or from Councilmember Hughes. Discussion from table? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
If I may, just address one thing.
Sure.
Just about the, a comment was made about the, the water rates from other cities being lower than ours. I just want to make sure that we're kind of comparing apples to apples, because sometimes some cities' commodity rates can be lower, but their fixed rates can be higher, so you just want to make sure you're comparing the total bill of, of your commodity and your fixed rates to other cities when you're, when you're doing that comparison.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, item 12, we have no other, we have no other business. Item 13 is our public comment for non-agenda items only. You'll have three minutes to make a comment. If it's a question, we'll try to answer it afterwards. We won't go back and forth. Yes, sir? Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a complaint that past graduates of the academy did not receive these nifty T-shirts. And I feel really slighted.
I will defer to the police department on that one. We have a new chief now. We have a new sheriff in town.
Definitely an upgrade.
Okay, further, further comment. Mr. Price.
I got a question. Remember about a year ago, we did the sidewalks, and everybody paid their $250 per square, and some paid a lot, some paid a little, and then you got a grant for 2-point-some-million dollars. I was wondering if they're just going to settle that way, and another thing, when they did mine, it, for 30-some years, we had no flooding on our sidewalks. They put our one square in, and now it floods on my left side all the way to my driveway, my right side to the last square of my neighbor's driveway. And in the wintertime, I've had people slip in and almost fall in, which if they get hurt, then that's my responsibility. But technically, I never had it for 30-some years until I got that square put in. What can I do about that?
Mayor.
I would.
Mayor, DPS, Mr. Omen will be over to take a look at that.
Yeah, because.
It's already been requested.
I don't need a liveel suit.
We don't either.
Do you have his address?
Yeah.
Okay. He'll, he'll be there to look at it.
Already in place.
Wait a wait.
Okay, further comments? No further comments? Mr. Gibbons?
I'll make it quick. Just appreciate council's work throughout the year. We are ending the fiscal year, this is our last meeting before the end. We had a lot of heavy lifting to do this year, and I just want to thank council and the citizens for your diligence and all the efforts, and then the department heads who are helping us get through and get to, hopefully it'll be a great 2025, 26 year.
Thank you. Mr. Miller?
Yes, just a couple items. One regarding sidewalks, the, I'm the grant administrator for the Sidewalk Gap program. We did start the program a couple of weeks ago at Leona and Moller, and we've been working north to Marquette. I want to let you know the, the lady who attended the last meeting, she ended up being very happy and leaving a message to the effect, we addressed all her concerns, and we were able to make sure that the sidewalk met her requirements, our requirements, and she's looking forward to having a sidewalk in a safer place for people to walk. We're working all, again, with every homeowner with different issues. On top of it, we've been able to adjust some sewer catch basins, look at trees that are in poor condition. At the same time, we're doing the sidewalk program. DPW's been working on the square program, and we're kind of focusing in that area also. And we're, we're moving forward and trying to accommodate any of the requests. When somebody does what we call the self-identification form online, we just want that for the information so that we're able to contact them if we're in front of their house, we have an issue with, regarding a drain, trees, things like that. And we're really, I think OCG is a good contractor, and they're working with us quite well to make sure that the project comes off smooth. And again, they're addressing any issues that we have or the residents have, and I'm looking forward to it. I'm meeting a lot of residents I never met before, so I think that's good, and I can start to rattle off some addresses even when somebody calls. So, but again, I think it's a good thing, and we're working, and OCG is a good contractor providing us with a lot of good service for the money. The second item I want to talk about was the Middle Belt Road is, as you can see, the barrel is out front. Wayne County is starting the project as, actually as we speak. I did want to remind everyone to, of course, obey those construction traffic signs and that all the businesses will be open and the access will be provided. I attended a pre-con meeting with Wayne County and also Brad Omen from DPW to talk about the businesses specifically, and then also protection of our downtown streetscape, brickwork, curbs, irrigation, street posts, all those things that we want to protect. But again, all the businesses will remain open and access will be provided, so a little patience, but I think Middle Belt Road will look very nice once that's done. Thank you.
Thank you. To piggyback your comment, I've meddled and heard from a lot of residents I didn't know either with the sidewalk program, so I thank you for meeting and talking with a lot of them to ease their concerns. There have been a few. Mayor Protem Dole?
Yeah, I had the opportunity to stop by the Radcliffe Center for the cones and cops event over there. What a fantastic job you men and women did. A lot of smiley faces, the kids really enjoyed that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Hughes.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a retirement in the fire department, and I want to congratulate Engineer Darren Candela on his retirement. Also, Mr. Miller, I'd like to thank you for acquiring those grants for our streetlight replacement.
Welcome.
Great work. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Witt?
Two things tonight. I just wanted to give my condolences out to the Pate family. He was a fellow student at Garden City High School who, for the last over 20 years, has fought with brain cancer, ended up losing his fight unfortunately, but he will be missed. The other thing, I just want to give a huge props to Lori, all her teachers, all the students for the Dance Express program. Both shows were amazing, was able to attend both. The amount of work that, you know, all of the children put in, all of the teachers, they just do a wonderful job. You missed out, but you got next year to go see it, so that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember King?
I'd like to thank the Garden City Police Department for putting together the Citizens Academy. It was definitely a great time. I've heard other councilmembers mention how great it was, but 100% agree, it's definitely worth your time. I, I hope other residents take the opportunity and sign up. I would list the officers to thank, but I know I'd miss somebody. It was a, seemed like a decent collaboration from all the officers, so thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Dole?
I've got a couple things, one of which I wanted, I wanted to thank all the officers involved with the Citizens Academy. Doesn't surprise me one bit that that many of them volunteered their time, and to the ones that put in the extra time getting everything planned, my complaint is not that I didn't get a T-shirt. I didn't get to practice on Milo, so I'll be coming over and taking you guys up on that at some point. And Erica, the mural at the park, great idea, looks terrific. Talking about parks, though, this Saturday at Kiwanis Park, there will be a cleanup. We're putting down some mulch, et cetera. I want to thank Brad and his guys for doing some pre-work there for us. And if anyone is familiar with the Kiwanis Club of Garden City, I am one of its younger members, so we could use any help. That's at nine o'clock. We only expect to be there for, for an hour or two. We also have, I thought I printed it out, Independence Day Lunch. Are there still openings for that?
Yes, sir.
And that's over at Radcliffe, 50 years and older. That's July 1st at noon, going to be hamburgers and hot dogs. There is a $10 charge. You can register for that at Radcliffe or online. The Goodfellows is having their second annual Christmas in July at the park, too, and that's on July 26th. We've got five different bands, it's free to come in, we've got food. It's just a fun opportunity to join us and help to ensure that there's no child in Garden City that does not have a Christmas. I wanted to thank all the department heads for these. I wanted to thank all the department heads for these reports that we get. Is it possible to get them on our website so the citizens can see them?
I, I think there's some information in there we could definitely encourage to go onto the website. Absolutely. I can look into that.
Yeah, because I mean, it would be terrific for, you know, people to know that these are all the runs that the, the fire department did, the police department, everything. It, it really puts a different spin on things when you know what's going on. The one we got from the police department, a lot of information in here about different officers enhancing their training. And that's terrific to know that it's a continuing process over there. The only other thing I had was with the reports, the building department, if it's possible, if we could get these notifications in real time of the CFOs or the new businesses coming into town. This is from May, you know, and there's four new businesses listed in here and it's just nice to know. So if they don't do a grand opening or anything like that, we can pop in and welcome them, say hi, just have that information. When residents say something to us and we're kind of like, you know, deer in headlights, yeah, I don't know what you're talking about.
Okay.
So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Karafotis.
I just have a few things. I have a question for Mr. Miller. When you went to the meeting regarding the construction on Middle Belt, did they give you a timeline?
As quick as possible. I do know that they were talking about it. Maybe Brad could remember. I think by, they're starting in June, 23rd or so began. I'm not sure.
At one point, I know. Start of the school year.
Yeah, yeah, before school was going to start.
Right.
Okay. And then I wanted to make it clear, the gentleman came up and talked about replacing the sidewalk and about the new sidewalk. And just so everybody's aware, the sidewalk grant that we got is for gap sidewalks only, so it's new sidewalks for someone that's never had one before. It's not, it's totally different than replacing your squares you already have. This is an odd thing. When Councilmember Dol and I have meetings with the public, more than a couple of people mentioned complaining about walking on the, the track at Garden City Park because there's so many electric bikes and electric scooters and that is actually not allowed to be on the park. And it's becoming very worrisome to some seniors and older people that are walking there. And I know we have things posted, but that may be something that we need to address because it's happening more often than not. The people that are there for the walking path are not able to enjoy the walking path. And I just want to reiterate to all the residents that the council and especially the city manager tried very hard to come up with a reasonable answer to our, our water fund problem. And it didn't go past anybody how hard this is going to be on our residents to get an increase. But I also wanted to reiterate that things like this that happened are not going to happen again. This summer, we'll be putting protocols in place so that things like that are not going to happen again. The council's going to have more of a majority vote and more awareness on money being spent on what account it's coming from and where it's going. And when we hear we're in the best financial shape ever, we're going to ask a couple more details. That's all I have.
Thank you. I don't have anything other than congratulations to our Citizen Academy graduates. And with that, I will take a motion to go into closed session.
Mayor.
Councilmember Witt.
I'd like to make a motion to move into closed session at 9:13 PM for strategy and negotiation session connected with the negotiations of a collective bargaining agreement pursuant to MCL 15.268C related to contract negotiation with Command Officers Association of Michigan.
It's a part. Part from Councilmember King. Mr. Miller, if you take roll call.
Yes. This is, again, it is 9:13 to go into closed session. And Councilmember Witt.
Aye.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Karafotis.
Aye.
Councilmember Dol.
Aye.
Councilmember Hughes.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dol.
Aye.
Mayor Jacobs.
Aye.
At this time, we are going to recess the meeting to go into closed session.